Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, September 17th at 6:01 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. If you've not already done so, please mute or shut off your cellphones. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
President.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
And Mayor Canning?
Here, thank you. If you'll all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the objective justice for all.
All right, we'll now move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. I have one speaker card for this... for two, so I'll start with that. And then anyone who didn't have a chance to fill a speaker card, you're welcome to come up. Rose LaClerk, should you so choose, please share with us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Welcome back, Rose.
Hi, thanks. I'm Rose LaClerk. I live at 210 Champagne West in Chateau, Calistoga. And I'm coming tonight to thank the council for funding a project that I proposed months ago. I don't remember. It's the File of Life Project, which is emergency information that people have, and they put it on... in these little packets. They put it on their refrigerator, and it helps the first responders immediately know the vital information and saves those precious moments. So I proposed it to the city, and the city funded it. And I'm happy to say that all 196 homes in Chateau, 143 homes in the Springs, 184 homes in Rancho, and the 30 senior apartments were all given these packets for safety. So I think it's important we all... it's easy to think and dwell on the negative stuff, and it's important to talk about the positives. So this was a project that I wanted to do, and the city funded it, so I'm here to say thank you publicly for it. And I have these packets for you up in the front if you haven't had them already. There's some leftovers, so anybody in the audience who would like one, I have some to pass out.
So Rose, before you walk away...
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you very much, because I know you talked to me about this several months ago. And as much... and I shared with you, as much as a city would like to do everything it possibly can all the time, every time, sometimes it takes the legwork of our citizens. So while we agreed to fund it, you certainly did all the legwork on that. And I know you had some other people volunteering, helping you out. Thank you very much. I know, and you know from speaking with the fire chief, it's one of the first places that EMS and fire services look when they enter someone's home is on the refrigerator for that. It is a critical and simple piece of information to have. They are... there are extras available for anyone in the community who'd like one. So they just need to contact us. But thank you for taking that initiative and being a do-gooder on that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's just one, quite a few packets. So if you need... if there are two of you in your household, you can let me know, and I will give you another form to fill out. You can put both people's information in the same packet. There's a little flyer in there that explains why and how to... sticker on your window that's by your front door to help the responders know to go to your fridge.
Great. And have you coordinated... what are we doing with the extras? Like, how do people get hold of them?
I have... I have what was on last year, so I can tap out and let you know if you'd like it. And then my phone number is on.
All right. Thank you very much, Rose. I appreciate that. Next, I have Jenny, and you've got two items. One is under public comment, and one's under an agendized item. Okay, come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Jenny Norris. I live on 75 Iris Drive. The first thing is the Vine Trail. I'm an avid bike rider, and I'm very much for it. I think that making the Vine Trail longer is a good progressive step towards sustainability, which is something that we all want here in this town. Trails like that are very common in Europe to connect small villages together. Also, it may draw tourists without cars, which would be good for this town. And it's a wonderful, healthy activity for the residents. And I just hope that we fund it. The other thing has to do with the generators, and I understand that the new generators will just be short-term in the location, operating only when they're needed and then taken away. And speaking as a gardener in the community garden, if it doesn't interfere with the generators at all, I would just like to request, if it doesn't matter, if they can still maneuver with the trucks and the propane and everything, if they can be placed back from the fence that separates the soon-to-be dog park from the community garden. Because if they're put right up towards the fence, it's going to block the sun, and then we can't grow our vegetables. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. City Manager Kern, I think there is a setback already built into that plan?
That's correct. PG&E is aware of the requirements of the garden and the need for the sunlight. So they've taken that into consideration in their placement or planned placement of the generators and also the fencing that will be between the community garden and the generators. So they had envisioned putting up some, we'll call it, non-seethrough fence, but we told them that that wouldn't work because it would block the sunlight. So they've modified how they're going to do that fencing as well.
Do you know how far back it is?
I want to say that it's at least 25 feet, maybe 30 feet from the fence line.
Good. That'll make a big difference.
And hopefully, the generators never end up there, because that would mean we never had a PSPS. But we're prepared if they are. Thank you very much. I don't have any more speaker cards. Is anyone wishing to address the council on a consent item or a non-agendized item? All right, I will close oral communication. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Yes, I just want to thank City Public Works, the City Manager Irene, and also Mr. Williams for being there on Monday with the Latino community, the Hispanic community. We put the flag on the community ball, and it's just to celebrate our, you know, our Latino heritage. So thank you to all of you for being there. And another thing is that this coming Friday at 7:00, the group Napa Climate Now is going to do a presentation regarding climate change. It's going to be here at 7:00 in this room. So I invite everybody who are willing to come and see their presentation. There's going to be games. There's going to be science experiments. And they do also a presentation in Spanish, but anybody who would like to come is welcome.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams?
I just talked with some folks on foothill. They're appreciative of the measures that the police and Public Works have taken to slow down the speeding there somewhat. And so they're grateful for that. They did ask about a second radar electronic sign going in each direction. I think that there were two in each direction, or maybe one in one direction and two in the other direction. And I thought that there was a second one online, but I wasn't sure what Public Works had in mind on that. Derek, do you happen to know, is there another one planned, or if I may ask?
We've got Derek, the City Manager, and the Police Chief, so we've got them all.
Yes, okay, great.
If we can address that briefly, if there are supposed to be two in each direction?
Yeah, there should be two in each direction, and we actually are ordering up some more additional signs. So there'll be some different signs potentially going out on the foothill.
I thought that was the case, and so I said, but I wasn't sure. So thank you for confirming.
Sure.
Chief, will you concur?
As Derek says.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
All right. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, got a couple items. Number one is Brandon Street, where PG&E has done some excavations in the middle of the street and left the street much worse than what it was before they started. And I'm wondering when that's going to be corrected.
So we are working with PG&E to get... they had a different contractor come out and do the work, and they did those locations where they excavated, different points along Brandon. And they will be coming back and repairing that. We will get that accomplished.
Does it got to wait for warm weather and like that?
Yeah, they had to come back and video each... they have to video each lateral sewer line to make sure that they didn't directionally drill through any of our utilities. So they have to come back and do that work, and then once they... you know, once the videos are reviewed, they haven't had a conflict, then the final finished work will be done.
Looks like spring?
No, hopefully before that, yeah.
Okay. Did you hear some doubt in my voice? Okay.
Experience-driven, right?
Yeah, experience-driven. The next issue also concerns PG&E a little bit. I understand PG&E, instead of putting the generators on Lower Washington, at least for this year, should the need arise, they'll be out at Silverado Trail in Lincoln. Is that correct? Is that still a plan?
Yes. So when we presented this item to council six months ago, it feels like. It probably wasn't that long, but it feels that long. The primary location is at Lower Washington, next to the Little League Field. In the event that PG&E isn't able to get that completed, the contingency plan is the corner at Silverado Trail in Washington. And given PG&E's deliverability, it's looking more likely that that will happen this fall.
So it's the temporary power supply?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's going to be, like the mayor said, on a case-by-case basis. We have executed the authorizations for them to use that property per your council's direction. So that's in place. It's important that we did that so that in the event that there was a PSPS, that they had full right and use of that property to mobilize as quickly as possible. If you recall, back in June, they thought they might need to do a PSPS, and we hadn't even started the discussions, and everybody was scrambling, trying to figure out how that authorization might occur. Fortunately, we didn't need to pull the trigger, but everything is in place now.
Terrific.
Does that change the grid at all, in terms of what they're able to power?
No. My understanding is that the polygon that they'll be powering up is still the same. And it's directly related to the risk assessment associated with the... adjacent to the severe fire hazard area. Basically, the line is, as I understand it, the river. Anything west of the river will not be energized. And northerly, it's somewhere this side of Tubbs. And then on the east boundary, it's basically the city limits.
We've had many conversations with the generator system aside, with PG&E, and what exactly by address will be powered and won't be powered.
That was going to be my next.
And while their engineers have figured it out, their legal group...
They've been busy.
Is not a... they're not in a position where they can definitively release those addresses no matter how many times we've asked.
Okay.
So they're...
Are they going to at some point, or?
They're pushing it through. We ask on a weekly basis. Their original intent was to release that information in July and then August, and we're now in September, but they are doing quite a bit of legal CYA.
Okay.
This person's opinion.
Okay. My next question. There's been some press recently about microgrids, and I know that we were out in front of a lot of other agencies by starting the process for a microgrid. Have we heard anything back as to when that first portion of the study is going to come back so we can determine whether we want to move further with it?
I'm anticipating that that will be before your council, the first meeting in November.
Okay. And lastly, but not leastly, I understand that on the 1st of October, we're going to have a potential contract in front of us on the law enforcement study. Is that still on track?
We've received the proposal from the consultant. Mitch is reviewing it and drafting a staff report. I believe our intent is to bring it to you on October 1st.
That is correct.
Terrific. Thanks, Chief.
And that's it for me.
Thank you very much.
For now.
For now. You reserve the right to repost. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing.
All right. Two items. Number one, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, of which myself and Councilmember Kraus represent the City of Calistoga on. I happened to be the chair last year and this coming year. They're doing their annual open house. It'll be... it's been announced, it's been in the papers, et cetera. It's tomorrow evening, or late afternoon, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM at Copia, next to the Oxbow in Napa. And it's soup to nuts, everything they do from operating the bus system to the shuttle system to transportation planning, traffic, planning, zoning, et cetera. So that will be 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Copia, and they are enticing you to go with food and beverage.
How about free bus fare down there?
Sure. I don't know how you'd execute that, but... so yeah, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Copia.
Just thinking out of the box.
And then the second thing, the military funeral for former Mayor Jack Jingles, who we announced his passing some weeks ago, is this Friday at 1:30 at the Sacramento Valley National Cemetery in Dixon. If you'd like further details, please contact City Hall. I will be representing the city there. And then there will be a community remembrance service that's being planned by the family sometime in October, and that will be announced. All right? With that said, we'll move on to the City Manager's report. City Manager Kern?
Just a couple of items. We apologize for the inconvenience for the last week and a half or so, but we've got a new patio on the side of the building here, so please take a look at that. Took care of some trip and fall hazard issues. I think it turned out pretty nice. The fall pool schedule is in play right now. The pool will be closing on September 29th, which is Sunday. And it won't reopen again until the spring. So thank you, everybody, that enjoyed and participated in our water aquatics programs and activities. A couple of meetings ago, there was a comment from the public that buses on Lincoln Avenue at the new bridge were not being able to park and let people off because of the signage and no red stripe. We reached out to NVTA, their transit manager, and inquired to them whether there were any inconveniences that they were observing, and they reported none. So the signs do appear to be working to their satisfaction. And we asked them to monitor the situation and give us any feedback if things change. So for right now, it appears that the signage is doing what it's supposed to do and will continue status quo unless otherwise determined. And Derek and Steve have been doing a great job in repurposing the old fire siren. We've tested it. We've got it hardwired. We're having a stand fabricated to allow it to be mounted on the ground and powered by a generator. And we're tentatively shooting for a test run of that on October 2nd at noon. And there'll be further information and some press releases, but we just wanted to kind of get that out there sooner rather than later, that it looks like everything is going according to plan. But that will be the first test, and hopefully it'll be successful. We'll reach out to the newspapers, do an article next week. And then prior to the actual event, we'll have the notice posted on our webpage. And probably the day of, I'm guessing around 10:00, maybe 11:00, we'll push out a NIXIL alert to let people know. But this is constructive notice. We'll bring it up again at the October 1st meeting. But just wanted to let you know we're moving forward on that.
I would wear hearing protection.
I'm going to let somebody else do it.
Yeah.
And then lastly, we received a flyer from the Up Valley Center regarding new rules associated with immigration and people wanting to enter the country or get a green card or extend their visas. This is part of the administration's program. The new rules are effective October 15th. And we have posted this notification on our webpage with a link to the Up Valley Center flyer that they gave us. Any questions, we're asking folks to call the Up Valley Center at 965-5010. And I'll have Irene read that in Spanish right now as well.
City Manager Kern, do you anticipate testing the siren in the eventual location? I think you're thinking of Mount Washington or testing it at the Boneyard?
No, it'll be at Mount Washington. The only difference will be that the siren will be about five feet off the ground versus 30 feet off the ground, which is the ultimate. But the effectiveness shouldn't change appreciably. And then the Fire Department will have a crew up on Petrified Forest Road, probably somewhere halfway up the mountain. And they'll also have a crew out at Tubbs in Myrtle Dale so that we can gauge the effectiveness of it.
So, lo más queremos decirle que hay información, nuevas reglas de carga pública está programando para entrar el vigencia en el 15 de octubre de este año cuando una persona solicita ingresar a los Estados Unidos, obtener su residencia permanente, or green card, or residencia permanente legal, o si quiere cambiar el estado de una carga pública. Hay más información en el sitio web de la ciudad de Calistoga, o también pueden llamar Up Valley Center, 9565010.
Thank you. All right.
I have a question for the City Manager. Please reach out to the Up Valley Family Center and let them know that... of course, I guess I'm not speaking for the whole council, but I'm almost sure I am, that if there's additional support needed from this council in regard to their activities with relation to these new regulations, that they should not hesitate to come and ask us.
Make sure we do that tomorrow.
And we currently... I believe we currently fund legal aid services...
Correct.
Through the Up Valley Family Center for this type of purpose?
Yep.
Just in case that...
We'll relay that message. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no proclamations or presentations this evening, so I'll move on and entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, unless an item is requested to be pulled.
I'd like to pull number two, please.
Number two. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar on all items excluding number two.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number two, resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a funding agreement with the Napa Valley Transportation Authority in approving a budget adjustment for preliminary engineering and environmental review for the Napa Vine Trail, Calistoga to St. Helena segment. The recommended action this evening is to consider adopting the resolution. Councilmember Williams, your question.
Yes, I'm good with the Vine Trail. It's very promising, and we're going to enjoy it. I have one concern about the funding. We're talking about $104,000 this year and $138,000 next year. But then the staff report acknowledges that the cost to complete construction may require additional funding. So it sounds like... we just don't know how much additional funding will be entailed. And by approving this, are we writing a blank check, is my concern? I don't want to be concerned about leaving that funding open-ended, or maybe you can reassure me that the costs are not going to balloon out of control. And I'm imagining an unlikely scenario, but say some agency withdraws from the... withdraws its funding, since they're not obliged, strictly speaking. Will the other cities be obliged to or feel compelled to fill the gap? And so I'm concerned about that unknown quantity that we may be looking at down the road.
Good questions. It's a complicated issue. Measure T comes into play significantly on this. If you recall, that's the half-cent sales tax initiative for transportation improvements. As part of that, all entities are responsible, in principle, to pony up 6 2/3 discretionary money, non-Measure T funds, for Class 1 bike facilities. For Calistoga, it equates to approximately $24,000 a year for the life of the measure. As the dollar value goes up that we receive, so would that go up commensurately. The open-ended part of the construction for any capital project, until you actually bid it, you're not going to know what that cost is. It's been an ongoing discussion at the NVTA Technical Advisory Committee, and I'm certain at the board as well, of the concern on the actual costs and the fact that initially the Vine Trail Coalition had indicated that they would be the primary funder of this project. NVTA has been successful in securing tiger grants and other grants through the federal government and the state government for construction. Those are a fixed amount based on an estimated cost at the then-time. Unfortunately, we're seeing an increase in construction costs due to everything. Lack of contractors is a big one. In the past, when NVTA has not... or when the costs have exceeded what the grant was or the original budget, they've tried to find other monies that are fluid that can be repurposed for this without jeopardizing ongoing programs. So at the Technical Advisory Committee level, that's going to be their first charge, is to try and make the project whole without digging into the local jurisdictions' pocket. That will continue to be the message that Calistoga will present. And as the... we are in a good position with the chair being one of our representatives. I think that message will be conveyed through the board as well. So I can't guarantee that there won't be a request for additional funding, but until we get to that point, I can't specifically answer the question.
So is it the case that we receive, what, $300,000 or so each year from the Measure T funds? I think it's something like that.
The first-year projections were $330,000.
Yeah. And so is it the case that no matter what costs are entailed, our obligation, as it's expected now, wouldn't be more than 6 2/3% of the... what are the revenue that comes in or the costs that are developing?
So the caveat under the ordinance is that it's 6 2/3% of the revenue that inures to the agency every year. to the agency every year for 30 years. So, if the $330,000 goes up to $400,000, then our $24,000...
Goes up.
Goes up. And that runs for the life of the measure. There is an independent tax oversight committee, just like they had for Measure A. I believe they have a little more authority than the Measure A Oversight Committee had. And they are very keenly focused on the agency's contribution and/or projects that they are going to deliver that equal or exceed the cumulative obligation of the county. And if a jurisdiction is in arrears on their contribution or project delivery for Class 1 facilities, the ITOC can make a recommendation to the county auditor controller to withhold our Measure T funds until we've made that good. And I, knowing the makeup of the ITOC and of the auditor, they're not going to be shy in pulling that trigger.
And also, a reminder, on the Calistoga to St. Helena leg, we've received $6.5 million grant. So...
We being the Vine Trail?
The Vine Trail project, through Napa Valley Transit Authority. So, we would risk losing the grant if it weren't for our participation in St. Helena's.
And the counties.
And the counties.
And the Vine Trail Coalition.
Right. And what I'll tell you, and Gary, who also represents us, will tell you is that all of the counties, all of the cities and towns are represented on the, on NVTA. And this is a very touchy subject, and we're all very keen on making sure that the Vine Trail does not exceed what their expenditures should be relative to what each individual city's responsibility is. But when you look at the opportunity that it's presented to get us from here to there, and not wanting to lose $6.5 million grant, we felt comfortable.
So, are you and Gary feeling confident that the other cities are also interested in...
They have something they want from us in the future. I don't know what that would be.
Okay.
But...
They're all in the same boat, yeah.
All right. Okay.
I recall back in the 1970s, that when they were working on the freeways, particularly the 210 freeway between Los Angeles and San Bernardino, that that freeway cost about $1 million a mile, and everybody thought, how the heck would we afford that? That is $45 million to get a freeway between those two cities. And this bike trail is $1 million a mile. So, if you invested in freeways in 1970, think of how rich you'd be today.
That's your investment advice for the day.
That's it.
All right.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my question. I was just concerned about that we don't, that we're not writing a blank check here.
Appreciate that. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, I'll bring it back to the council and entertain a motion on item number two as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. There is no public hearing, but there is a general government item. Item number five, discuss and provide direction to the city's voting delegates regarding the 2019 League of California Cities Conference Resolutions to be considered at the League's 2019 Annual Conference, which is October 16th through the 18th in Long Beach, California. Recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. Taking us through this will be Irene.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. So, before you tonight for discussion are the two resolutions which have been introduced for consideration before the League of California Cities Policy Committees at the annual League Conference Meeting on October 16th, as mentioned. As part of your membership to the League, you have an opportunity to consider such matters. So, the first resolution calls on the California Public Utilities Commission to amend Rule 20A to add projects in very high fire hazard severity zones to the list of eligibility criteria, and to increase funding allocation for Rule 20A projects. The second resolution calls upon the federal and state governments to address the devastating impacts of international transboundary pollution flows into the southernmost regions of California and the Pacific Ocean. It has been the past practice of the council to support the League's recommendations, though you are not required to do so. Based on your discussion tonight, the action before you is to determine the city's position on the proposed League resolutions, and direct voting delegate Mayor Canning and voting alternate council member Lopez Ortega. Staff is requesting that upon direction and by motion, council adopt a resolution stating the city's position on the League's proposed resolutions to be heard before the League Policy Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council members. Any questions of staff? Anyone in the public? All right, we'll entertain a motion, this motion as presented.
I'll move we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, we have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council, which will be October 1st at 6:00 p.m. in the same facility. Have a lovely evening.